Welcome back. Been sitting here a while. Glad to be back.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five Portsmouth Town Council Meeting. For those of you who are new or don't come here very often, we have an emergency evacuation plan. We have three doors. If there is an issue for any reason, we have to evacuate. There's the door you came through. There is a door behind your left shoulder, and then there's one behind Mr. Reese. We'll all evacuate, head over to the school department building and wait for further instructions. Now, if you'd all please join me in a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for our men and women in harm's way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, if you could do the roll call, please.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
Ms. Mike.
Here.
Ms. McDowell.
Here.
Ms. Patton.
Here.
Mr. Payaro.
Here.
Mr. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Hamilton.
I am here. Thank you very much. First up on the agenda, we had a presentation for Dr. Kentworthy. He couldn't make it this evening, so we were going to push that until August twenty fifth, correct? Okay. Next up, we have our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved. Second.
One question. On bills?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, just a couple of things. If you could explain a little bit, the tax sale expenditures, my understanding is that it's from the tax sale, the legal counsel to sell these properties, or no? Nineteen thousand, six sixty?
All right, those are all fees, titles, search, mailings, all of that are included in that cost, and it just passed on to the people that purchased the tax sale. It's zero sum.
And how many properties did that?
This year, five. I ended up selling. I mean, we start out with over a hundred and thirty on the list.
Yep.
Gets whittled down.
Thank you very much. And then the DePonte grass cutting, does the town do any of our grass cutting, or is it all through the DePont or DePonte or?
DePont, I guess. Yes.
Yeah, it's a mix between the town and DePont.
DePont does all the school properties. The town does a mix of both.
So that that thirty thousand, two sixty-six is a month and a half of grass cutting, or what does that represent?
It's one month. It's contractual.
One month?
I know, I'm sorry. A quarter? I will find out, and I'll get right back to you.
Yep. Because I didn't, I didn't see that in the previous one, and I know that we've got an extension here of time, but I just wanted to know how much the town did, and then vehicle repair costs. We do have a vehicle repair person in police and DPW, correct?
We have a maintenance technician who works both in police and in DPW. That's correct.
For vehicles?
That's correct.
Okay, but we end up having to send a lot out, right?
There's some that does need to get sent out, particularly if it's a huge engine repair job, a rebuild job for one of the apparatus, so on and so forth.
Okay, thank, thank you. I'm sorry.
My throat, sorry. Any other questions? We had a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, all right.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we'll be sitting as the Board of License Commissioners. Or, I guess I'll step up and I will welcome our new municipal court judge, who's not here this evening, but we did appoint Alicia Anthony to be our municipal court judge, and she'll be starting in three weeks.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Next up is the Board of License Commissioners. We have two peddlers licensed, one for Neuro Brews LLC, twenty-six Highview Ave. in Smithfield, and one for Coney's Corner, DBA, Crowwell Creations, thirty-one Riversdale Avenue, West Warwick.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes seven to zero. And then we have a holiday license for Ocean State Controlled Botanicals, DBA, Newport Cannabis Company, sixteen thirty-seven West Main Road.
They are formerly?
Formerly Greenleaf, correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes seven to zero.
Motion to adjourn as the Board of License Commissioners?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes seven, zero. Next, we have minutes from six eleven, six twenty-three, and six, seven fifteen. Do we have any changes or corrections or questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have tax vouchers, twenty twenty-five, zero two eight, zero one, to twenty twenty-five, zero seven, twenty-eight, twenty-one. I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
I just have a question.
Hold on.
Yep. Yeah, I just have a question regarding the two.
Use, yeah, use the number for me.
What's that?
Just use the number.
So it's voucher two oh two, five oh seven, two eight. And two oh two, five oh seven.
Well, they're all, they're all, yeah.
Those are the day.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Okay, down to nine. And my question is this, so I see that it goes back to twenty twenty, and I see that in, in the explanation, it talks about mistakenly omitted from tax rolls and then discovery of incorrectly assessed improvements. Is this something, I mean, that is related to vision, or is it related to the town of Portsmouth in these omissions and discoveries?
It's a combination. It wasn't that they, the property was picked up. It was never missed. It just was incorrectly categorized. So it was under assessed.
So is it vision, or is it the town of Portsmouth?
I'm ultimately responsible
Okay.
for it.
Well, I'm just saying if it's.
Discovery comes up.
Yeah, you deal with it, right.
And by a year, I can go back six years.
My question is relating to if it, if it reflects on our mechanism to do this through vision, let's say, then I just wanted to know if they play a strong part in this, because if these are here, then there's probably others, no? If vision is?
It isn't a vision problem.
It is not a vision.
Not, it's, I mean, the whole methodology, if you don't gain access, you don't know. You're making a logical, educated guess a lot of times, and try to be as fair as possible. This case, it was missed.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes seven to zero. On what, Mr. DiPaola?
On what he was just talking about that was just missed. We got him the property on West Shore Road.
What about it?
Mr., I'm sorry, name and address for the record.
Michael DiPaola, ten seventy-four East Main Road.
Will reflect the record that Mr. DiPaola does not live at ten seventy-four East Main Road again.
How would you know where I live?
I know exactly where you live, because you have a lot of really nasty signs pointing to your neighbor.
I have nasty signs pointed to my neighbor?
Yes.
So you want to finish your question now, Mr. DiPaola? Yes. I believe, I'm the one that reported the situation there on West Shore Road. I don't know how he, because I arrived late, I apologize. I'm not sure how he did the calculation and how far back he can go. But I believe that a house, when you have an accessory structure, which I believe that's what he said he was being taxed on for the last, I don't know, few years. It wasn't from day one, because originally, there was no permit. So there was no tax. So at some point, he found, he discovered.
He went back six years, which is as far as the league can go. That's it.
What about the apartment that's in the house?
It's been assessed properly.
So he has assessed it?
It's been assessed properly.
How much, I know I missed it. How much did the total amount for the last six years come to?
With the change in assessment?
Yes. If it was assessed properly for the last six years, how much has somebody not paid their proper Portsmouth taxes to the citizens of Portsmouth?
He has paid all of his taxes to the citizens of Portsmouth.
That he was assessed?
Okay, we're done. Thank you.
How much was the amount?
Give or take seven thousand dollars over the past seven years extra.
Seven thousand dollars. That's the only difference?
Yes.
Wow, that's unbelievable.
Mr. Rayner, Town Administrator's report.
Town Council, ladies and gentlemen. With respect to the curbside transfer station, our new curbside waste collection program officially launched at the beginning of July. While the rollout has not been without its challenges, the feedback received from residents has been overwhelmingly positive. That said, we are closely tracking and responding to complaints regarding missed pickups, scheduling inconsistencies, and confusion around the collection of old carts from haulers. We remain in constant communication with Mega, the vendor who was awarded the exclusive contract. Mega has been responsive and is proactively working with us to resolve outstanding issues. They are working to complete the collection of old carts this week, and staff are coordinating with other vendors who previously service Portsmouth to ensure that their bins are collected as well. We track all customer calls and service issues, and our staff alongside with Mega and DPW are committed to resolving concerns as expeditiously as possible. Missed pickups are being addressed through a structured resolution schedule, so reports received before noon are addressed the same day, and those received in the afternoon are addressed the following day. Trucks used for the program are GPS tracked and equipped with cameras, and most missed collections have been traced to bins which have not been placed out by the correct time in the morning. We are asking all residents to ensure that their bins are out either the night before or no later than six AM. We can also attribute some of them as pickups to confusion regarding the collection schedule. So we are continuing to communicate with residents about proper placement and timing, and information is being continuously updated on our website. As of today, three thousand, one hundred and three households have enrolled in the curbside collection program. One thousand, nine hundred and eighteen households are signed up for the Headley Street Transfer Station, and eighty-one households are enrolled in the Prudence Island Transfer Station. With regard to recycling, an electronic waste collection event was held on July nineteenth at the Portsmouth High School, and this was an event that was open to all residents, and it was extremely well utilized. Our last recycling event this year will also be an e-waste collection event, which will be held at the high school on December thirteenth. With respect to the Mount Hope Bridge overlay project, the Rhode Island Turnpike and Bridge Authority has announced a full closure of the Mount Hope Bridge for resurfacing work scheduled to begin Friday, August second, at eight PM. The bridge will remain closed through the weekend and is expected to reopen by five AM on Monday, August fifth. This closure is necessary to allow crews to safely and efficiently complete critical paving and rehabilitation work as part of RITPA's ongoing preservation of the structure. Except for emergency response vehicles, the bridge will be completely inaccessible to vehicle traffic during this period, so we encourage residents and travelers to plan accordingly and allow extra time to travel via alternate routes. RITPA has published advance notice materials and will continue to provide updates through their website and social media channels, and the town will also post reminders and alerts as the closure approaches. The American band concert scheduled at Glen Manor House, originally on July tenth, has been rescheduled to this coming Thursday, July thirty-first, at six thirty PM. The event is free and open to the public, and the grounds open at five thirty PM, and we encourage attendees to bring lawn chairs and blankets. Also note that Town Hall will be closed Wednesday, August eleventh, in observance of Victory Day. What did I say? Wednesday? Monday. Monday, August eleventh, in observance of Victory Day. The state holiday commemorates the end of World War Two and observed, and is observed on the second Monday of August each year. Lastly, I just want to take a moment to recognize the recent passing of Don Wilkinson, who together with his wife Katie, served for many years as the caretakers and operators of the Glen Manor House. Don was a beloved figure in Portsmouth and played an essential role in making Glen Manor House a cherished venue for so many families, couples, and organizations throughout the years. His dedication, spirit, and pride in the manor left a lasting impression on all who had the pleasure of working with him, and on behalf of the town, I extend our heartfelt condolences to Katie and the entire Wilkinson family. Don will be deeply missed.
Thank you, Mr. Rayner. Any questions? Yes.
Mr. Rayner, you said, I think you misspoke on the dates, but it should be the twenty-second of August to the twenty-fifth? I think you said the second to the fifth. So.
I stand corrected. Ms. Payo, you have a question?
I don't have a question. I actually just had a comment, and I just want to commend the administrator and the DPW director on the rollout of curbside. I know that many of us have received some complaints that have happened, but I could say every single time I've asked for information or a follow-up, they've been handled pretty fast, and I just want to commend you for the work, and although Rich and I have had some disagreements about pickups by DPW, I think the fact that you guys went out of your way to do that and try to make the residents happy and kind of expedite that process, it was to the benefit of the town, and I just thank you for it.
Ms. Teresa, you have a question?
Yes, I did, and this relates to the, to the curbside also. I just had a question on the four thousand number they originally came up to for customers. And I'm just curious, because the four thousand number of curbside customers that set the present rate was based likely on an accurate number to use as a base. There were likely never four thousand people who generated, there were never four thousand. The people who generated little trash always shared barrels and cost with, you know, among the same vendors, and that was completely legal, ethical, and made good economic sense for the taxpayer. The assumption that each house paid for their own service was flawed and not accurate. Further, every business owner in town would take their trash to their own dumpsters for no additional cost. And I've talked to the ones that I know, and this has just woken them up, and that's what they're doing. And they said some of the businesses that they know and that they're doing for their employees also, let them bring their trash to work also. The four thousand number was to get a low price, and it was maybe not accurate, but I just have a question of what's going to happen if it doesn't pan out. Will the town send out a supplemental bill for the curbside users if this is a shortfall in real users? Because Mega gets the same amount of money, whether we get four thousand people or three thousand people. And curbside is a self-supporting enterprise fund like the transfer station and cannot be supported with taxpayer money. And the transfer station is forced to take out bands, bonds for repair of buildings and compactors. So my question is, if it doesn't work, will a supplemental bill be sent out?
No.
Because the budget is in, and we've already got that.
The answer.
How do they pay Mega?
Because the town pays Mega out of the general fund, and then it was, and it's paid back from the following year if the sticker price were to be raised or needed to be raised.
And you answered your own question in your statement by saying it's an enterprise fund.
The same.
It is, but I just wanted to make sure that it is an enterprise fund, and we're going to maintain it, but that's how you're going to do it.
That's the same way we do it with the, with the transfer station. It is getting paid for off of the.
All right.
When the, whether you take a bond out or we make repairs to the station.
Right.
It's paid for out of the general fund and then paid back by the.
Right, because we're just paying, we're just paying off the bond right now for skinning the building and that. Okay.
The same way, if only nineteen hundred people sign up for the transfer station, and there's sticker sharing going on, there's going to be a shortfall, and that price will go up as well.
Yep, well, I don't know whether it's stickers or beach stickers, but I just got sticker twenty-five sixty today.
There could be.
But it could be doubles. Yeah, it could be doubles.
Yeah, it could be, it could be people getting ten dollar stickers. It's nineteen hundred and eighty-two was the number you said?
Yeah, so.
Nineteen hundred and eighteen.
I mean, it's important to note, that number didn't come out of anywhere. There's over sixty-five hundred eligible households in Portsmouth, right? We've been averaging about two thousand households signing up for the transfer station. We felt that four thousand was a good number to shoot for with regard to establishing the price for the sticker for this year. So right now, you have about five thousand households that have signed up for waste management service somehow, whether they're taking it to the transfer station or getting curbside. There's fifteen hundred households that are not signed up for anything. So when we did our calculation, we figured that, okay, maybe four or five hundred households are either, they're doing something else with their trash. They're taking it to work, they have a business, what have you. That's still a healthy number of people that have to figure out what to do with their trash. So while we're not at the four thousand number, the prorated stickers don't kick in until the last quarter of this fiscal year. So we have all the way until March before we start figuring out what the price is going to be for the next sticker for the following year, and we, we are selling stickers every single day. The shortfall, just as in the transfer station, will be reflected in the price of the next sticker price. So as I've stated before, if you're sharing barrels, if you're sharing stickers at the transfer station, all you're doing is increasing the price of the sticker price for your neighbors. That's all you're doing.
Ms. McDowell?
That was a great article in the paper that you, you did for the curbside. I just had one comment about it regarding, you know, the, the problem that has arisen as a result of the rollout, or was kind of, it was kind of implied that this town council was sort of responsible for maybe a a tough rollout, and I, I just kind of take exception to that. I think that it was, it's a contract through the company that was agreed upon in early February. They had, I mean, I didn't get any notice that they were having difficulty coming up with routes or anything like that. In fact, we got, we got a, you gave us an update almost each meeting regarding that, so I, I think, you know, the DPW has been very responsive to complaints, and I think that's great. I do, though, think that the company has, has to take some ownership of this as well. And my other question would be related to, I mean, do we send a bill to Mega for the work that we're doing from the DPW to take, pick up those barrels and keep them, and or is that just a a wash or something?
We've not been picking up the Mega barrels. Mega is picking up the Mega barrels. Waste Management has been very slow in picking up their barrels. So we have an agreement, we've notified them, that if DPW is in an area and they're doing other work and they see waste management bins, we're picking them up, taking them to the yard, and Waste Management can come to the yard to pick them up. No, we're not billing them. We're trying to cut down on the number of complaints. With regard to the article, the fact of the matter is that we did not know that we were going to have a program until the council finally voted to keep the ordinance in place. We could not move forward with the ordering of the bins or any other programming of the curbside waste management pickup service until the final decision was made in February. That's just the fact. It's not lying blame. It's not insinuating anything. So we had from February establish a sticker price in March and start selling stickers and trying to get as many people signed up as possible. So I think it's been a pretty monumental effort to start a program that is catered to four thousand households in this town, and start a program from virtually nothing and get it rolling by the first of July. So my hat's off to DPW and everybody that's been supporting the program, and we're going to continue to do everything we can to ensure that we resolve all the complaints, get all the empty bins off the streets, and make this as transparent to people as possible so that we can move on to other issues.
Thank you.
Any further questions on the administrator's report? On to new business number one, which is a resolution in support of maintaining the birthing center.
Resignation.
Oh, resignations and appointments, sorry. My bad. All right, we have two resignations, both by Ms. Andreola from the Planning Commission and also the Economic Development Committee.
Motion to receive the resignations with regret.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes seven to zero, and a reappointment for Mr. Harris.
Motion to reappoint Mr. Harris to the Pension Advisory Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes seven to zero. Now on to new business number one, which is a resolution in support of keeping the birthing center open at Newport Hospital. There are roughly give or take a birth a day in Newport, and it would be nice to have a localized birthing center, so I have a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second, but I would like to also say something.
I have a comment also.
Mr. Reese can go first. I went first, last.
No, no, it's, no, I'm for keeping this, but I have a couple of concerns. It's, this is a private company with a business model that needs to be corrected. That's the problem. And this is not our business as a town to get involved with a private business. I believe we should support the center with outreach to legislatures, Brown Health, Newport Hospital, state and local agencies. But under no circumstances should it be considered by this resolution to support the birthing center to include Portsmouth Town taxpayer funds in any way, and I just request that that be made part of the record.
Sorry, okay. Ms. Payo?
All right, thank you, Mr. President. I am wholeheartedly in support. And for those that don't know, my day job is in healthcare policy, and there are direct health implications for when you do not have a birthing center here in home. The birthing center is not just a place where people go and deliver babies. It's an all-around service that we need here in our community. There's a direct, like I said, direct correlation between being able to have a place in your neighborhood that does all the wraparound services, not only prenatal, postpartum, but also the mental health issues, lactation issues. There's so many things that we as a society take for granted when it comes to those services, that not having them in our backyard will be detrimental to the health of all Rhode Islanders. And if we're going to do that, then we need to start really focusing on the fact that Rhode Islanders better be ready to cross over a bridge in order to be able to get service. I know I just said the, I just said something that's probably not going to get me reelected. But then that means mothers in Newport, if they're all the way down Ocean Drive, let's just say, I'm just trying to think about Farpoint, is going, are going to have to travel at least an hour to get to the nearest health facility without having to go to an emergency room. And we all know that emergency rooms drive up costs because acute care is sometimes six times more expensive than healthcare when it's pre-planned and you have a plan for it. At the end of the day, those healthcare services, and Mr. Reese, you probably said something that would make people that are advocates for single payer healthcare pretty happy. We need to restructure the entire healthcare system in the way that we finance it. But then at the same time, those costs, when they are acutely accrued, are then spread out throughout the entire community, and we all end up paying for it. So keeping the center open is a necessity, not only for me as a parent of a child, I have my two children, but it goes for everyone. The health model is broken. If it starts with the birthing center, then it's going to move on to something else until they get their profit. So thank you, Mr. President, and I also, I wholeheartedly second and will support this.
Okay, any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, absolutely, you can say something.
First, I want to know, did you, you guys develop a resolution? Pardon?
Just need your name and address from.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pauline Perkins-Moyet, I'm from Newport, and I'm the Director of Resident Services for the House and Authority. I'm bringing it on my behalf of myself. Did you all develop a resolution?
No, it's the same resolution.
It's the same resolution as?
Newport, James.
Newport and James.
We just changed.
Jamesville really had a very strong one. I went there the other night.
We just changed the name to Portsmouth.
But, you know, it's important, I mean, which is, I appreciate your, what you said, and I agree with what you said. But, you know, it's important, I mean, which is, I appreciate your, uh, what you said, and I agree with what you said. It's important, it was noted in Jamestown by somebody who works at the hospital who said, you know, middle of the night, snowstorm, woman's having a crisis, high-risk pregnancy, you go to Newport Hospital, they may not be able to see you at the hospital, you may have somebody who's having a stroke or having a heart attack, now you're going to pay attention to this lady who's got this problem with, with the birth. So, it's so important, there's a rally tomorrow night. I think the whole town of Newport is so upset around this whole issue that it's just not, it's not a joke, it's real. And people are really upset about not having a, one lady of the night at Jamestown said that her grandfather was born in the hospital in two thousand, no, nineteen oh one. That's how long it's been around, so it's not, it's not a new kid on the block. So, I appreciate, um, on behalf of myself and my family and where I work and where I live, the resolutions and their strength and the, the, um, support that all these councils are giving to this. Um, it's just extremely important. So, tomorrow, if you want to come, the Edward King, no, the, uh, the Quaker Meeting House over on, no, Quaker Meeting House. Well, as far as I know, it's the, uh, Quaker Meeting House, it's going to be a rally. So, to support this whole, whole, this whole effort.
Either way, if you find yourself at the Friends Meeting House and there's nobody there, walk over to City Hall and vice versa.
Yeah, I know. There'll be somebody there.
It's only a block, but it's not too bad.
Appreciate it, um, I don't know.
Six P M.
Yeah, six o'clock, yep. Thank you very much, this is a very, it's, it's, it's a heart, and I'm sure you can understand it. Even if you're a man, you can understand what your wife went through, what your sister went through, trying to have a baby. And, and we're not that small, you know? I mean, people joke when you go to Providence, you came all the way to Providence? Well, I don't want to hear that, if I'm in labor, I came all the way to Providence? Or I had to come all the way to Providence? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pauling.
Counselor, welcome out to the country.
Thank you. SciCom Super Vong, Walnut Street, Newport, Rhode Island. To echo the point that was just made, the way that person is probably getting to Providence, especially if they see traffic, is in an ambulance, and guess who's going to pick up the uncompensated portion of that bill? That's going to be your taxpayers, so I think this is also good fiscal sense. Um, I just want to thank you all on behalf of myself, Counselor Smythe, Counselor Pinock, and the balance of the Newport City Council. Um, as was pointed out, we have no jurisdiction or control over what a private entity does, but our collective voices have a whole lot more weight when they are well-coordinated across this entire island community to ensure that middle-class and working families on a quidnic island don't continue to bear the burden of the bill that the entire state needs to share in figuring out a solution to. And so, I don't want to ruin this masterclass in an efficient public meeting, but I just wanted to express our, our, our thanks on behalf of the Newport City Council for your consideration of this resolution.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. New business number two, we have an appointment for a alternate to the Board of Canvassers under Rhode Island General Law, that apparently is my job. So, I will make a motion to appoint Paul Murphy of Sixteen Prospect Lane.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have a resident's request to discuss reaching out to Ry dot, which I think is actually going to be, uh, Ripta. To discuss possible shelter areas at bus stops on East Main and West Main Road. So, I, I believe Ripta handles them, Ms. McDowell.
So, this, this, um, came to, to me through our meetings once a month, and, um, we have a resident, Richard Nassau, who would like to speak on behalf of this issue, and so I, I appreciate the opportunity that, that we're giving him.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Richard Nassau.
Just pick up the microphone a little bit and just, you gotta speak, kind of bring into it.
Is that better?
Perfect, okay. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, thank you for your time, I will try to be brief, I can see that you've got quite a bit of, uh, important business to take care of. My name is Richard Nassau, N A S S A U. I reside at fifty-three Sandy Point Farm Road here in Portsmouth. Um, I am a transplanted New Yorker, and this is going to be my, uh, legal residence, uh, once and for all, I've been here for five years, within the next couple of months. I'm from New York, and, um, I guess I have an acute sense of my surroundings when it comes to cars, buses, mass transportation, and so on. People from New York City rely on mass transportation. What, um, I noticed is that we have bus stops, but no bus shelters for people to sit down, uh, for people to be protected from the sun, the elements, and so on. It, without having a shelter at a stop, and I'm just telling you how, my own personal feeling about it, it doesn't seem to coincide with the, uh, the community that, that Portsmouth is. I think, I think that, uh, most residents in Portsmouth would not push back on, at least with the notion of starting a rollout of some bus shelters, and I guess Ry dot would be the people to go to with respect to which stops are busier. We have a new senior center that's going to be opening, and, um, uh, my thought was, you know, maybe we could, we could start there. Uh, I think you have about twenty-plus stops from the shelter, from the shelter, from the, uh, senior center, uh, right up to Middletown, obviously. Every, uh, bus stop can't be met, but if the, uh, town council may open this up to considering a rollout and sort of high-spot it in certain areas, uh, north and south, where people can go and come back and return. I think that that would be, uh, in addition, uh, and a good, uh, plus, uh, for the town. I just, uh, listened for about the last ten minutes on all of the very important items that are being considered, they're all very important, and they all cost money. And I'm sensitive to that fact. There is a woman that I know that has been living in Portsmouth for maybe forty or fifty years, and she actually stops and picks people up on East Main Road, coming or going. And I've had a conversation with her a couple of times at length, and I said, you know, I've, I've thought about it, of pulling over and, and, and picking someone up, but what I'm concerned about is a liability factor, I mean, crazy things happen, what happens if you, if you get into an accident? Am I going to be held liable for someone else who I was trying to help or whatever? So, uh, anyway, um, those are my thoughts. Uh, if the town council, uh, would take that under consideration, uh, I think it's something that is a requirement more than just a need for the people that need transportation the most, um, that don't have the ability, uh, to own a car, um, but will rely on some sort of mass transportation where they can have a seat and be sheltered from the elements and, um, show them a little bit of, uh, goodwill. Those are my thoughts. Um, I'm open to any questions or, uh, comments that anyone else, uh...
We appreciate you bringing it forward.
Okay, thank you.
We will continue the conversations, we've had conversations, made multiple conversations with Ripta in the past about putting in other stops, including across the street here, um, and other areas.
Ripta is responsible for the shelters?
Ripta, yes, so the Rhode Island Public Transit Authority is responsible, not Ry dot.
Oh, Ripta, I confused the two, okay.
Yeah, there's just too many acronyms in this world. So, the Rhode Island Public Transit Authority that handles the buses would handle the bus stops to be placed on Ry dot's property. So, we would probably have to work with both entities to put them into proper locations.
Have you had discussions with them before?
Yes.
And could you share with me just a broad stroke, what response? If you don't want to, of course.
Nope, I, I'll have our town planner, who has the most conversations with the state. This, this is Ms. Hishen, she's our town planner.
All right, Richard. Nice to meet you, Mr. Nassau. I have before me the Rhode Island Bus Stop Design Guide. It's only eighty-four pages, and Ripta, Ripta has shelter placement criteria. Um, and they have thirty-six hundred bus stops in the state and three hundred and fifty shelters. They are currently in the process of ending, um, an inventory, they're finishing up an inventory of all their bus stops and shelters in Rhode Island. And I'm very excited to see the, uh, conditions of our own bus stops, um, here in Portsmouth. And I'd be happy to share that information with the council and Mr. Nassau when we get that. Um, you know, you, we probably drive by some of the bus stops along Route sixty here in Portsmouth, going from Newport to Providence, and we probably drive by a lot of them and not even recognize that they're there. And, um, I do have a lot of empathy, like Mr. Nassau has, for the horrible conditions of some of the bus stops. Um, but I did attend a GroSmart, uh, virtual meeting back in February of the Secret Lives of Bus Stops, and it was pretty, pretty fascinating, and, um, I could definitely pass that on to you. But, um, it was really interesting that the average bus, bus shelter costs about fifty thousand dollars. And, um, with all the benches, light fixtures, site design, engineering, lighting is another thirty thousand. So, they're not cheap at all. Um, and like I said, um, they have a whole criteria lists and points are given for, um, the number of ridership and, um, economic proxim, proximity and clo, um, proximity to healthcare, education proximity. So, there's a lot of, um, details that go into what, who gets a shelter versus just a bus stop, and, um, obviously, being closer to, um, urban areas versus rural areas gets a lot more consideration. So, I'd be happy to get all that information and forward it to the council and Mr. Nassau um, in the, in the coming weeks. But they are way more expensive than you'd think.
Appreciate that, and anything that the state pays for is more expensive than if you and I went down there with a hammer and nails.
Right.
Yeah. Ms. McDowell?
So, do you think we have a shot in the dark?
I, I, when I drive through town, I definitely see some of the, the bus stops being used, and there's definitely a potential for some increased improvements on some of them. Um, whether we need a bus shelter with all the lights and bells and whistles, probably not at every one of them, but there's definitely an opportunity for improvements for some of them, for sure. Like the one right outside.
Yep.
Um, I, I think is a problem.
And Mr. Nassau's suggestion at the senior center would be one, because there typically are two people here, three people there, and maybe one at the senior center, if there was a shelter, they might all meet in the middle. They sound in the actual bus stops.
So, does the total, um, cost burden lie with the state? Or do, does Portsmouth share any of that?
Well, the implication on this Zoom meeting back in February was it would be nice if the town
tripped in.
Uh, tripped in.
Yeah.
And as everybody knows, Ripta is possibly cutting back some routes. So, um, who, who knows what's to come?
Yes. Yeah, Mr. Nassau, you want to follow, you follow up at the, at the microphone, please, sir? Yes.
So, I heard you mention a fifty thousand dollar number, and then I heard you mention a thirty thousand dollar number above that. Eighty thousand dollars?
Welcome to Rhode Island.
I'm, I'm sorry?
Welcome to Rhode Island.
I, I don't, I, I, I don't underst-
I'll read it right here, it's in like twenty-point font. "A new bus shelter has a total cost of approximately fifty thousand dollars. The cost of the shelter varies depending on the size, with key amenities such as benches and light fixtures around twenty thousand, and then the cost of site design, engineering, and lighting is another thirty."
Who came up with those numbers?
This is from Ripta.
And I understand that it's from Ripta. Who, from within Ripta, came up with those numbers? Because that's...
More than likely, it was a engineering firm that they subbed out the work to. I wouldn't know which one it is, but more than likely, they used an out, a, a private engineering firm to come up with the numbers.
I know that just in going into, uh, Middletown, I've never seen a light on at any bus shelter at all, I don't know how.
I, I think we're, we're talking about those that are in more, uh, urban areas.
Okay, so, um, what, why is that different from a rural area? A bus shelter is a bus shelter.
Like I said, there's criteria for all different sorts of bus stops and bus shelters, there's different variations.
Okay, uh, I don't want to beat this thing to death, but what's your criteria, what would the criteria be for here?
Mr. President, if you don't mind?
Go ahead.
Without beating it, as a former New York City transplant myself, uh, all sidewalks in New York City are city property. Unlike here, there are different rules and regulations, uh, and just, I did the research too when this came up, and, and just kind of my comparison of major metropolitan cities. A bus stop in a bus shelter in New York City costs anywhere between one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and two hundred K and to install, and then this is my, like, from numbers I had ten years ago, that I had one put in at the school I worked at. Um, and it's just very different, plus the funding mechanism is different. To answer, uh, Counselor McDowell's question, it has to go through the Ripta budget, and yeah, like our planner said, uh, Ripta has got a ten million dollar hole that they have to fix first before they start doing anything else. Um, and then that's what we have to go through, it's just the funding mechanisms are different. You and I could have an offline conversation, and I could give you the A's and B's of how things are a little bit different between...
I would welcome that, if I could leave you my email.
I would gladly give you my card.
Just to, just start the, okay, I, I've taken up enough of everybody's time about this, but thank you very much.
That's good.
And, um, you can forward that information to me as well? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for your, thank you for your time, thank you.
I just have a question for you, Leah. Um, when I looked online, um, the design guide was from twenty twenty-four, is that the same one you have?
It is.
Okay, I was just wondering if there was a new one that they put out before, you know, after.
No, I was curious myself.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Can I jump on this horsebeating? Do you have an estimate of when we will get the final say from Ripta on if they will be cutting the local bus routes?
I know, the hearings are upcoming.
Okay. I, I hadn't heard an official date, I didn't know if you had, thank you.
We, we'll, we'll be having a discussion about Ripta routes on the twelfth. Mr. Gleason?
I just have one comment. Um, it's, it's not that often that I say good things about Ry dot, but I will say that it does look like on the new road, uh, project on East Main that they are putting in concrete pads where their bus stops exist, and I would assume they would do the same when they do the tarring here on East Main in Portsmouth. So, that, that is one plus, at least people aren't standing on the side, you know, on grass, on a slant, so there is some considerations being taken for bus riders, although not, although not the ones that we ultimately like to see and can afford, for that matter.
I did see the one right there by Shops, sorry.
There's several of them.
Shops is gone now, good, yeah, so, okay. Mr. Nassau, so we will continue to work with them, and we'll have some follow-up for you as soon as we can, I don't think. Do we need anything further? Good, okay.
Thank you, Walter.
Thank you very much for bringing this forward. Next up, we have a new business number four, which is a request to discuss working with Ry dot to address the noise coming from Route twenty-four following a removal of trees, shrubs, and underbrush and everything else by Common Fence Point, which is not just Common Fence Point, it's all the way down twenty-four, uh, anywhere along the, uh, new holes that are going in. So, Ms. McDowell, um, we did talk about this before, and I did reach out to
Yes, and I-
Ry dot about Jake- Rideot about jake breaking, and they said they won't put up no jake breaking signs because it's a safety feature of trucks.
Right. And, and this concern also was brought to our attention and by a resident, Mill Kinsella. And she is here tonight to speak on that, and also, I guess, some noise issues in Common Fence Point. There's been a lot of cutting, removal of trees and shrubs along the Common Fence Point area, which has increased the noise levels, and she just wanted to address it and see if we have some recommendations or something that we can do to help her out.
Good evening, Mill. How are you?
Hi, good thanks. Mill Kinsella, seventy-fourth Avenue, Antipulver, Portsmouth. And a couple of years ago, and my timeline may be off because I really don't know if it's yesterday or two years ago. However, I actually, the, the traffic was very loud and got louder after Gina decided that the no jaking sign would not be re-put up after the, the bridge was, was done. And I couldn't figure out why, and I know I asked Representative Jay, can't even remember his last. Edwards, thank you, Edwards. And he said that supposedly it was a federal law that you couldn't put up the no jaking sign.
What I was told is there's no federal law prohibiting jake breaking, so they wouldn't put up signs on the state's behalf to prohibit jake breaking.
Okay, so that's sort of like solid. There's no way around that, or, okay. Because it was, it was, it's, when people, when they, the trucks come up the bridge, they jake all the way to the West Main Road exit, which is, you know.
Right past my house, Councilwoman Arrows' house, and Ms. Patton's. Yeah, so we all hear it.
You all, you all know that, yeah, it's been on for a long time. And likewise, the motorcycles. I mean, it's, it's, I can't talk. I've had to stop conversations on the phone when I'm on my deck because you can't, you can't hear. Everything is just so loud. And also, Mary referred to the other noise levels in the neighborhood of, I would hope that maybe we could have some, another sort of ordinance for, people are chipping, chipping like trees, chipping for hours, not chipping. Do you know what I mean?
Chainsaw cutting down trees or chipping?
No, then they chip them on site, and it seems to, and it's really loud. We're a very dense neighborhood, dense neighborhood. Sounds loud. We've got water on both sides. And, you know, when they're, when they're doing that with that grinding machine, it's just like, you can't even imagine it. Of course, you can't talk on the phone then either. But it's just very loud, and it seems to me that should be, you know, the chainsaws, it's gonna happen, the trees are gonna get cut down. But that in ordinance could be that, that, that the chipping should be done off-site in an industrial area. This is a residential neighborhood, and it's not a normal noise. It's not, you know. That's just a thought that, you know, seems like a good idea to me. And the current problem now is with Rhode Island Energy, cutting down all that vegetation. Not only do we see the highway, we hear the highway, I mean, twice. I mean, I believe it's got to be double the decibels. Because I know, I think it's a hundred feet of trees lower, absorb ten decibels of sound. It's a figure from long ago, but I think that's what they were. So it's very loud there, and it is, it's, you can't talk. I mean, just in your own home, you can't, you can't talk if your windows are open. So I just would hope, I mean, I know in Connecticut, they have, I know Rideout would probably never do this, but they have, they've built walls. You know, this is twenty years ago, they, they did that, you know, along ninety-five with the, the, you know, so loud. So I was just looking, you know, Mary was kind enough to be, and these town council hours are really great, I think, because we do get to ask questions one-on-one, and I appreciate that, that, I don't know whose idea that was, but it's a good idea. And so, that's it. Did I make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
We all got it.
Okay.
I don't know what Rhode Island Energy's plans are to replace vegetation once they're done, but we can reach out to them and ask them.
That'd be great.
The process, I believe, goes through the end of this year at least, right? Looking at Paul just for a little nod. Yeah. Unfortunately, they are cutting down more vegetation. If you look all the way along the property line, if you go down Bristol Ferry Road, you'll, you'll see it by the high school. So I don't know what their plans are in terms of replacing it, but we will reach out to them and find out.
I mean, it just seems, yeah, just some sort of sound mitigator would be great. Okay, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mill.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have a new business number five, which is a request approval of an increased billing rate for our special counsel, Terrence Tierney, who handles most of our D E M and environmental issues, going from one hundred to one twenty-five an hour. Questions? I have a motion to approve.
I, I see that Mr. Larissa approved this, and I want to understand why the increase was requested now after the budget's already been done?
It was requested by Mr. Tierney after the budget process.
So I, I, I'm a little concerned that our entire legal budget coming into the next budget is going, we're, we're creating a structural deficit in our complete, our entire legal budget. We budgeted for a certain amount. Obviously, we know that our solicitor fee is going to be, I think, right now, we're six K under than what we originally had budgeted for. I think that we should probably hold off on any increases until we know exactly what the budget should look like for next year. I completely get, get that this is a, that Mr. Tierney's been with the town for a while. And this is an increase of twenty-five dollars per hour. But I think that the prudent thing to do would be to wait until we do our next budget and then increase his fee there.
Okay, I will take some more comments. I'm going to task you real quick. You have a ballpark number of hours that Mr. Tierney did last year. I think you'd be surprised that the, the number's not very high.
One twenty.
Hundred and twenty hours. Okay. So.
I, I, I would say it's not a matter of hours. It's a matter of just budgeting principle.
Mr. Reese?
Mr. Gleason? I understand your concerns, Counselor. I, I think for the small amount there, we, we do have a tough road coming at us for D E M issues. And I, I believe the request was for more money. So there was a negotiated rate, and I think a twenty-five dollar increase, increase for the type and the amount of work he does is, is reasonable, and I, and I will support this, this action.
Yeah, I mean, Ms. Blake?
Is there additional scope? There's no backup of, of the request of why to, to help understand.
Because.
And a twenty-five percent pay increase is substantial.
He's been paid a hundred dollars an hour for the past fifteen years or so, so.
Understood, but without additional backup and, and not during the budget season, it just seems.
Understood. If the hours stay the same, we're looking at about a three thousand dollar delta. My, my hope would be that our general legal counsel and solicitors will help to keep the rest of those bills down. We also made a decision to increase our prosecutor's dollars. So we have to very strongly look at our legal fees to make sure that we can fit them into this budget. But I think Mr. Tierney is worth the extra twenty-five dollars an hour, considering that most lawyers get paid three fifty, four hundred.
Yeah, I, I can also support this. I just, it would have been better if it came in during the budget process. And is there a reason it didn't? Do we know?
It was just requested to our solicitors to ask for this extra money. And Mr. Larissa, do you want to?
Terry Tierney is a steal at one twenty-five an hour. He'd be a steal at double that price. Hundred dollars an hour, even our rate, one seventy-five, as the president said, is, is far below market value. Sure, we need Terry on board for the matters, D E M, to help Gio and I. We could handle it ourselves. But Terry has the institutional history, and you're going to see it a later time in the potential dispute with D E M. You may end up in the future having a choice between counsel at five hundred to seven fifty an hour, the prior counsel, or higher, and a bill of one hundred to a half million dollars. If that were to go full-blown crazy litigation, or an option for myself and Terry and Gio, who can do this stuff and do litigation for years and years, and have done it in composition to and with Mr. Petros, handling it ourselves at a small fraction of that course. So the, the plea here is for twenty-five dollars an hour, eminently reasonable for Mr. Tierney to keep him on board, keep him helping with the existing matters, and invaluable in trying to reach a settlement with D E M that could end up costing, and I just talking about the legal fees, a lot more money for the town in the future. So I would ask you to, the question I was here to answer, though, the first one you asked is, why did it come up now? Mr. Tierney was reviewing everything, like I'm doing tonight with the council. He came in and reviewed everything with us. He saw that the council fee for the solicitors went from one hundred to one seventy-five, and that that happened recently. Asked if he could get an increase too, and was satisfied with that small increase. So as soon as he made that request to us, we put it on the next docket, so that, that's why it was delayed. Happy to answer anything else. Otherwise, I'll sit down. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I, for the extra roughly three thousand dollars a year, I think it's worth it for Mr. Tierney. Is there a motion to approve the increase of twenty-five dollars per hour?
No.
Second.
So pick a Dave and Ms. Patton is the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes six to one. Next up, we have correspondents.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I just have one question, correspondence. The, the Prudence Island Water District report, and it said that there's an unresolved deficiency, maybe with the storage tank. Can anybody talk to that?
Wouldn't she have to pull the item for us to be able to discuss?
If, if, if we're not going to, if it's just a quick question, Mr. Rayner, you know what the unresolved issue is? Or if you want to get back to us?
I don't, but I would assume that it's
Part of the backbone.
Boyle Water Advisory, that they've been under for years, that they're trying to rectify through the capital improvements that they're implementing throughout their system. They received quite a grant, not only from our ARPA funds, APRA funds, ARPA, American Rescue Plan. ARPA funds and through a congressionally-directed spending grant, which they are slowly burning through to do these capital improvements, with the hope that this will get them out from the Boyle, the Boyle Water Advisory. I, I, I'm assuming that's what it is, but I'll look into it, and I'll, I'll send a note to the entire council.
Thanks.
Motion to receive and place on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We have future meetings. We can cover right now of August twelfth, which is a Tuesday night, after the holiday on the eleventh, August twenty-fifth, and September eighth. We are now going to enter into executive session for updates onto our legal work under Rhode Island General Law forty-two, forty-six, five, eight, two. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
No move. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you.